You're watching a fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
And I'll begin with the ball. I'll start with Victoria because I left her on last time she called me. Victoria is here, Scott Self, that's me, Richard Lane.
Here.
Mark Salero.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
And selectmen Charles.
Perfect.
And Steve Malone, alternate. Here.
Here.
Michael is going to alternate, not here. Dan Johnson will not be here. And again, we have the full board, so we don't need the alternate, but Steve can sit with us anyway. Now, the agenda tonight. We have public hearing, one public hearing. It says, public hearing twenty-four dash zero two zero is a boundary line adjustment application. Bill Hubble, they submitted a boundary line application on behalf of Peyton and Nicholas Patterson for a property located at two twelve Flat Mill Road, tax map two three six, block fifty-eight to fifty-nine. And then under discussions and other business, we have a voluntary merger, which is they've taken off the table where that was a voluntary merger between Nickerfackis, tax map one oh eight blocks, twenty dash one in twenty-one. A turmoil site plan, one year extension, site plan review regulations, we're discussing on section five changes, subject changes. Mike Jatton might be here for that. Ordinance definitions, site plan review training, perhaps? On, hello, we are not doing seven, okay, it was a poor site therapy. All right, and anything else that needs to be discussed in the data? Brings us up to the beginning, which is the approval of the minutes for September twelve, twenty twenty-four. Their motion to. Okay, a motion by Victoria, seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion, any changes?
We will be able to back and discuss in sections on this again.
Second down, this is the, this is just for the minutes.
Yeah, but we go back into the minutes to make.
If there are changes or something that isn't right in the minutes, now's the time to do it.
Well, there are questions on them. Final answer, we know that's the question.
Now's the time to do it. Yep. Okay. It's from the September four, right, the ones we have right here.
I'm not sure his question begins with much of the subject, yes, of my. My question, what has been written?
Not the content. Okay, you just want to discuss.
I want to go back into to get some information from that, further discuss it.
Okay. What's all along? All right, is there any other further discussion on the minutes? And all those in favor can you get a saying aye? All those opposed. And let's see as far as regional impact, something on tonight's agenda. Fire us a notice around town, so we'll read our regional impacts. Okay. Motion by Brandon, that's, you're not have regional impact on anything on the agenda, that's seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? Follow the favorite indicate the saying aye, all right, suppose. Bring us to our first order of business, public hearing, that is a public hearing twenty-four dash zero, and that's a boundary line adjustment with Phil McWalter submitted. And then that's the between tax map two thirty-six, block fifty-eight to fifty-nine. We have a drawing in front of us, and if anyone thinks that we have enough information here to proceed to a public hearing, I will hope nothing. We have the information. That's our open for that application accepted as complete. By Victoria and seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor can you say aye, all those opposed. It was seconded by Richard. That the application.
Yes.
And so I'll open up the public hearing. And Bill, would you like to present? I think the board probably knows pretty much what you're doing here because you're, you know, not too long ago with this, but listen. Anything to add to it?
No, this came about because when we did the original, it, it revealed that there was a discrepancy between the survey that was done in nineteen sixty-six. I had forgotten who did it. And, and the deed. So we, we were under contract for three point seven acres. It turned out there weren't three point seven acres. It ended up being two point five nine. At one point it was two point nine four. This was all during the discussion with, with the surveyor. So the buyers indicated that in order to move forward with the transaction, they wanted two point nine four acres. And so the field saw went back and re-surveyed. And as you can see, they kind of squared off a portion of the lot on the Woodland Heights side, and that gave them the two point nine four acres.
And it makes more sense the way it's drawn out now.
It lays out much better.
Does, does everyone get what's going on here? This, yeah, there are any questions from the board. Is there anyone from the public on this, this spot? If not, then I will.
Did you say anything about, I thought you said something about three point something acres?
We were working off of a deed and a survey that were inaccurate. And the deed called for three point seven acres, the survey indicated three point seven acres. And as we researched it after we were under contract, it became apparent that the survey was wrong, the deed was wrong. And there were multiple figures that the surveyor gave, one of which was two point nine four, which is what the, the buyers agreed to take. And then when he did the ultimate, which I presented to you, it came in at two point five nine. So the buyers, at that point, we were too late. We didn't want to hold up the closing, so we were too late to come back to the planning board, and we agreed that we would do it after post-closing. And so this, this allowed them to get back to the two point nine four. So there was confusion throughout the process.
So you get a correct deed, right?
We would get a correct deed, yep. If, if this is approved.
Could you clarify which is partial A and partial B? It points to the same part of the plot on the flat.
So.
This, I think those are the, they were, there's a couple of them with these some confusion. The, the original, which is. Which you, which you see here, parcel A is being conveyed.
Oh, that little piece of parcel A, is that little piece of parcel A? I got it now, okay, I've got it. And, yeah, that's just for the law act. That's packing. Anything from anybody else? And I will close the public hearing. Public hearing closed, pretty straightforward. That's what he's trying to do, so.
I think it's long to approve.
Motion to approve the lot line adjustments by Mark, seconded by Michael, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor can you get a saying aye? All right, all opposed?
Thank you.
And you've got it.
Appreciate it.
So I bring this to the voluntary merger of Nickerfackis, they withdrawn that, so we aren't doing that. Terrible site plan, one year extension. And I see you are here, just identify yourself with the record, please.
I'm Ray Anderson, the owner of Terminal Manufacturing. It's actually RMA manufacturing, doing business as Terminal Manufacturing, and Mara Properties actually owns the property now, so I bought it with another man.
Now you're confusing.
So, yeah, I'm not trying to, but things change over time, so.
You guys do have an email attachment underneath your packet, just showing that he did, he did request this online, just show up communication between our department and.
Kind of work through the interest rates and all the other things that, you know, affect us, so.
And you're still, still going ahead with the original site plan?
Yeah, we'd like, yeah, so Jim Fipp had retired, and so I, you know, I'm looking for another person to take his place, but I need any more work done in that area. But I still have my original architect and everything working with me, so.
Yeah, just remember that if anything changes, you have to be here.
Yes, yes, nothing's changed.
Same, same one.
Right now, nothing's changing, so.
Well, I'll move every separate fact in. When is it projected to start?
I'd like to start clearing the land here, you know, getting the trees taken down and all that stuff, this, this fall and winter, you know.
It doesn't have to be, the planning board can still extend it if they're. But it has to do with revoking or, or making them come back if there is substantial development, and the land board does not give them an extension. That may come back, the planning board can extend it with nothing done, all was properly. And intend to do it, waiting for income rates and builders or whatever they may, those things take time. But, and we had a motion by Michael to extend, give them one year extension from today, seconded by Brandon. Now, any other stuff?
Because on that, this is a drawn line, so it is. Then this year, substantial action has to be taken, otherwise it goes back to zero.
Uh, yeah, and he comes back to the board. You know what he just said, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? And all those in favor can you get a saying aye, all those opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Now we had site plan, plan review regulations, this is the second by changes. We've just got the, the actual wording that's going here, and if we have no changes on that wording, then we can have a public hearing on it. And dock with into our regulation. Oh, yeah, it does, it doesn't have to do with that?
It has to do with our site plan.
Yep.
All part of it. As far as the contractor being the sort of.
No, this has to do with the exempt, I mean, not exempt, this has to do with the last page there of just the site plan modifications. So then we, after that, we can discuss the contractor based stuff there, so. We're talking about a new section six, I mean, not section, subsection six in section five under general, and we have it on the very back page of our packet. And I'll just read it down through here, and the new six would be site plan modifications. A, site plan modifications may be approved at a regularly scheduled meeting without a public hearing, but the board determines that the proposed modification is minor in nature and conforms to all requirements of these site plan review regulations and conforms to all the conditions of the originally approved site plan and would not alter the general layout and use of the approved site. Under B, these would be examples of a site plan modification included, but are not limited to minor changes in the location of utilities, minor adjustments to the placement of structures, minor changes to the landscaping plans as a included change in layouts, vehicles, and plants, et cetera. Replace some of the structure that is the same footprint and gross square footage of the original structure. And C, modifications affecting your butters. Any modification that affects it in a butter, setbacks, screening, traffic, lighting, et cetera, shall require a public hearing in accordance with, say, six, seven, six, four, dot by eight. So that's what we're contemplating on putting into our regulations to allow these modifications that we've been doing all along, but we just really had to bufferize ourselves and do it officially. Any discussion on that? See, see, smiling, must have let the word out or something.
We can do it more. So, that was this report with what we kind of agreed to on our last meeting of allowing. Administration.
Oh, that's, that's not for modifications, so that is for a new tenant. It was used to be multi-tenant, but we decided to, to get rid of multi-tenant because we don't really have the authority to do something other than the site plan. So, yeah, that has to do with somebody moving into a multi-tenant building with the same use. If it is straight with people who are, are going to determine that it doesn't require a site plan review, and they would notify us that that's an decision they made. If there's a question about it, come forward.
But would not alter the general layout or use of the approved site. Going back to.
Um, is that? Is that under multi-tenant, something with that? Well, that's under modification, yeah, but this is, that, that whole subsection of site plan modifications only has to do with, say, with the site plan we approved, and they came in like a couple of weeks later and said, well, this storm drain, our engineer says can't go here, it's got to go five feet over there, or twenty feet over, something like that. Something minor like that, like the utility doesn't have to go here or there. That's a site plan modification, and the board cannot at a meeting approve that without a public hearing, as long as it's minor, something like that. But what you're talking about has to do with a site plan that's been approved, and they've had a change in tenant. Someone had a bicycle shop in there, and they left, and someone else came in to repair something else, say, maybe even repair bicycles, but it was a different person. That's, that's a new tenant, but it's the same exact thing, no real changes to it, so these guys would probably say, you know, there's no change, you guys don't have to do anything, and they let us know.
You have a good note.
Yeah, we get a memo about it. That has to do with that, but if it's a different use, then they'd be here in front of the board, and then the board would determine whether we had to have a site plan on it, or whether they didn't need a site plan, because we can do that, you know, regulations, we can decide. Site plan, no site plan, so it's, it's a much more of a change, you know, there's traffic issues or something there, you know, it was a change in tenant. Say, come back in for a site plan because there's just too much else going on there.
I just want to need to clarify and make sure that there's no confusion at first to one. So we still provide two ways, we just don't need to, well, two ways, just minor modification.
For the minor ones, right, but we're, we're talking about two different things.
Yeah.
Okay, but for the minor ones, you're right, in a regular meeting, because it's, it's minor in nature, and it doesn't, well, if it does disrupt the site plan, then they have to.
Yeah, but I understand your problem.
So, all, all this is, is legitimizing the site plan modification process you guys have been doing.
Yeah.
This is just putting on paper essentially.
Nobody's called us a task on it, but they may. Victoria, you had a question?
It's following what Richard was saying, so separate topic, that should be site two, maybe change in tenants. So, let's say that the new tenant, let's say that there are like existing problems with the site that have just been there over time, you know, the bicycle repair shop, let's say I have a parking or whatever, if there makes. Is that a time when we can, um, say, you know, I mean, you know, it's the same use, uh, we've got adjustments to make it function.
Or if we have, we have, you know, through the code enforcement, if we have complaints and stuff about the property, that's a time to address, so if you haven't come in, the board decides whether they have to come in for a site plan review, or it can resolve, resolve at a meeting, but they have to come in.
Which is unfortunate with a new tenant, but if it's existing property that address.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that approval, we can be saying, once we read the letter, say, for all reserve and sound, you know, it should have been approved.
Um, what approval are you talking, you mean, initial site plan?
No, yeah. The change of plan.
Well, the change, well, we wouldn't have approved it yet, if there are problems with the site plan and they come in, we would not have approved those guys. And then the board would decide what we want them to do, whether they need to have a new site plan to come in, or whether they could do it, say, as a modification or something, or, or decide that. That. All right, we're having a couple of different things here. Were you wondering, like, if they approved? And, well, if there was problems, how would you address it?
Yeah, and it's.
Was that what you were?
Yeah, but I think we talked about it last meeting. They can provide approval for that approval.
That's what you meant, yes.
That letter.
The planning board always has a final site, always. Yeah.
As long as that's nobody.
And even if they, if, we'll say, our staff says something or gives permission for somebody for something, and they don't like what the staff said, they can come in here, because the planning board, again, always has final, all that stuff.
Absolutely.
So.
So we were motioning.
Well, getting, no, we don't yet, no, yeah, getting back to our, this is just the site plan modification, we aren't in the multi-tenant thing right now, we're just site plan modifications. And again, it just puts on paper what we've been doing quite a while. Do anybody have any questions on that, or any issues?
If the original site plan was approved, let's say it's a bicycle shop. But now with the change in attitude of riding bicycles, all of a sudden the volume of sales or repairs increases. Is that parking facility grandfathered in because of the original?
No, no, we're back to the multi-tenant thing again, right?
No, it's, no, it's.
Where is the modification? Because that's, that's not a modification, anytime you expand the use of your business, expands, it comes and forth as a site plan review. Automatically triggers a site plan review and expansion of your business. You know, if, if they have more traffic coming in, they've expanded their business, and if they need more parking, then obviously that's why they're going in here.
If they're still in compliance, it is, there was not a whole lot that would be.
That's different, yeah, if they're in compliance, then.
Well, I think what Richard was getting, Mr. Kirby from law. Not so much expansion of the business as it is explosion of business.
As long as they're in compliance, right, I mean, that's all, exactly, yeah, if they're in compliance, yeah.
Parking is sufficient today. But, same with the bicycle example, if taken off, now eight months a year, it's not.
But if they're in compliance with our parking regulations under the square footed regulation or, or employee regulation, they're in compliance with that. Regardless of whether you think their business exploded or golfers did not, they can still do it, because it's in our regulations, we can't go against our regulations.
Well, we'll have an example out here, so say they agree with Colin, they require that landing state. And in order to make it, we're not. You have a big setting up standard and say, we require our new tenant to impact that landscape.
A new tenant?
For sure.
It would, it would be, would be the owner, whoever the owner of record of the property is, not necessarily the tenant, but yeah. He's getting a tenant in there, and then the board determines that, yeah, that all this stuff died, they're out of compliance with the site plan. So, yeah, that would be the time for the board to decide.
After compliance, they even if there wasn't a.
It is, so the board can say, you know.
Yeah, that would be taken here.
And the board has standing to do that.
That would be a code enforcement complaint, and that would filter into the planning board.
That's right, yeah, that's how we commit to it.
But, but that, I know we're off the site plan modification, but this is site plan, we're going to speak clearly, since our seconded review to create. So in this example, let's say that in the original multi-tenant application, new, new tenant comes in. Landscape was some other stuff in the. And the board at that point would say. Really, that's the landscape, even though the original approval didn't call for it.
The board, if, if it's a, the change in tenant is, we'll say, the same exact use, then probably not, because that wouldn't trigger the site plan, but it's a different use, it triggers a whole site plan. And then, yes, landscaping would come into that, because that's part of our approach.
I, I have, I have a hard time holding the tenant responsible for the owner's.
Okay.
It would be the owner coming in with the site plan, you know, they've got the tenant come in, but the owner of the property would come in with a site plan and it's change of use.
Yes, but if, we can't say for, we can't say that a tenant has to hold up moving into a structure because of the owner's negligence, right? That, that seems, that seems, um, I don't know, the right one.
Kids.
Kind of, um, that would be a whole separate process in my mind. That would come through code enforcement, whereas this would come through something else, I don't know, I'd have a hard time saying to a new tenant, you know, you can't do this because the owner of the building has to do this first, you know.
Again, we're just looking for ways to, you know, we have some situations in town that are store, well, they're pretty shady. And would this be a way to try to possibly make it easier?
Yeah. But anytime you come in for a site plan, all of those things are on the table, right? Well, they're not, yeah, sorry, we've gotten off the site plan a little bit, because now we're talking about tenants, and that's not quite.
No, we are talking about site plans because we disregarded our whole new tenant thing, because we are not authorized to have a meeting, you know, public hearing on a new tenant, it's site plan or nothing.
Well, yeah, this is under the, this is under the. We're talking hypothetically, if somebody comes in for a multi-tenant, we require them to have a site plan. So now we're kind of, I feel like we're off, we're too off track here. The, the Victoria point, this is the educational part. Yeah. No, we, we, yeah, um, yeah, I just, I have a hard time holding new tenants responsible for owners' lack of action on this.
I, I think probably everybody agrees with that.
Yeah.
You've got all the owners.
Yeah.
So it'd have to be like a case by case basis.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah, it'd have to be a case by case.
Because it wouldn't be a code enforcement thing, because that was never in the original.
Yeah, true, then, right.
You'd have to.
Yeah, if it was never in the original approval, then, you know, what is our authority to?
And then the only way to change it, if it wasn't in their original site plan, would be to get them back in here with a new site plan, but the only way to do that, if it's a multi-tenant, if I'm understanding this correctly, is if it changes use, like if a restaurant was in here, and that tenant moved out, and then John Doe came in here to do a restaurant again, nothing changes, so therefore you couldn't require him to come in, correct?
Unless it was a bigger restaurant.
Unless it was bigger, or unless they changed it altogether and went away from a restaurant and opened up a bicycle repair shop.
Exactly.
And they'd be in here, and again, they'd be in here under site plan review regulation.
Exactly, you can get a full site plan review.
And under site plan review authority, that's when the planning board can decide something like that, so. Steve, yes.
When we approve a site, a site plan, and say that, okay, this is the landscape, you get it put in, it's on the site plan. We say, and refreshing here, not only to put it in, but to maintain.
We do say, I know, since we, we say it, um, has to last a year, I think we have that in there, something about that, is it? But, yeah, to maintain, I mean, I know, I think we've said that before in some of our. There isn't something in there that specifies that, because I remember when we were, when FWF was in here. Yeah. There was, we were talking about their shrubbage and whatnot, and it was. I remember Victoria had recommended that they put in, I don't remember what, what they were, but certain trees that were better for that area or something like that, and then I remember you saying it doesn't matter. Like, they could put in some, something that came from Africa, but if it only lasted a couple of months, it's up to them to, they have to keep on replacing it every time, every time it does. Is that, that's for the lifetime of that? I would have to say so, because it's part of the site plan, and if something has changed in the site plan, that stuff died or something, so I would have to say that, I don't know if it is a clause or something like that.
It's just twenty-four months.
Sure. Oh, two years, no.
Should we come forward with code enforcement, so see, and say, you've got to change that.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's that, that, when you come forward for enforcement.
I, I think the main thing to remember is that if they're still in compliance with their approved site plan, you know, you gotta be careful.
Yeah.
Right, it's only when they're no longer in compliance that they're approved site plan, or they're changing something that's triggering.
Under general standards, this land keeping must be maintained in good condition and replaced as necessary to the standards here.
Perfect. That was good.
So I'd like to make a motion to a plan, a site plan new regulation, section six, as read by the chair.
Okay, so.
Then we can continue the other conversations.
I'll second, okay, so they, I'm voting to go ahead, to accept the, I guess, the wording of the sideline modification section, and we still have to have a public hearing on this, so this is, this is, no, it isn't, it's not because it wasn't noticed.
It was, it was. I noticed this in the public hearing.
It didn't come under here on the public hearings, you have one public hearing right there. Yeah, I only read it in the one public hearing.
I noticed it in the public hearing, sorry, that, that was my.
Notice organization, that's us.
Yeah, so that was an agenda notice.
Was it, or wasn't it noticed as a public?
It was, it went out.
In the paper?
In the paper, it went, it went in the paper, it went out in three public places, and it went out on our website.
Okay, then, then I will open up the public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah, that, that was an organization issue. I'll open the public hearing. And again, we already reviewed this new.
We're talking, talking about the site plan.
We're talking about.
The modifications.
Yep.
Regulations, what we've been talking about.
Well, it's going in our site plan review regulations, it's, it's, it's going to be a new.
No, I understand that, we had, I had two different topics, site plan modifications.
And then.
And then site plan review regulations, and I'm only trying to make a distinction in the minutes.
Okay, this, the site plan modifications are going in our site plan review regulations, it's going to be a part of it.
I understand. Is that how, I mean, it's a separate section.
Yeah, it's just, it's just right here.
It's, it's.
Yes, right.
It's subsection six.
I'll make sure that it's clear exactly what you're opening the public hearing for.
Okay. Okay, so it's, we're opening up the public hearing to modify our site plan review regulations.
Okay.
And the modification would be. A section of site plan review modifications, or site plan modifications.
Chair, we can't just repeat the rest of the theme of the conversation.
No, I won't be messing.
Can somebody make a motion to incorporate the prior discussion on this topic? Into the public hearing?
No, we don't need that, because, again. In order to have the public hearing on these modifications here, we have to have a discussion like that first. And if everyone is in agreement with what's written there, we don't want to change any of the wording, then we can go to public hearing, which is what we've done, so we're right on schedule.
And is there anybody here for the ball?
Yes, no, you will mind, let's give anyone. So, I guess, again. Yeah, the public hearing open, it's official, and, and the site plan modifications, I read them before, I don't think I need to read them again. I don't know what it is. Any discussion on it? Then if not, we'll. Entertain a motion to.
Don't you have to close it first or no?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we have to discuss, yeah.
Already had a motion from this.
Oh, wait, you already made that motion, okay.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, I missed that, sorry. Motion by Mark to incorporate the site plan modifications into our site plan review regulations. Seconded by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that's it.
Sorry about that, guys. I got, I poked it down on accident. It was noted.
Okay. So that's done, that'll be on regulations, so. Can, um, can we all get a, a copy of our new site plan review regulations?
Absolutely.
For, for, because I, I think we all have, um.
I haven't printed up, I have the table of contents ready, so.
You got the whole business.
I can, I got a double check, I can probably have that Monday.
That'd be great, we're just for our next meeting, bring us a little, yeah, because I know I have stuff penciled in mine and here and there, but.
And, and we're not going to try to change anymore.
Oh, yes, we, it's up to the board to do that.
Right, just saying, why, why get copies now, it's, we're going to do some more changes.
Well, I don't know if we'll do them real soon, but I'm saying it's one of the duties of the board to review their site plan review regulations from time to time.
Yeah.
So. We don't plan in the near future.
I understand that, but I was just saying, we're going to get the new copies, I'm going to do more.
I got, yeah, you're right, no, I don't think anybody, anybody else, I don't think we're going to do anymore, just, yes.
That's good, but, um, under, under section five general, under number one. I don't know why it just raised something, what? How do we define unnecessary hardship?
Oh, that is actually defined in our, uh. Who I can find me the section.
Did we reference that then, under the general?
I believe it's, it's defined under variance. Uh, but I think the same definition should apply.
Necessary hardship.
Unnecessary.
Sorry.
Yeah, we can reference the RSA that defines that, I think that would.
Also, that might have the CBA, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Criteria for CBA users. When, when a, when an applicant comes, one of the criteria that they have to address is whether there is a, the impact. Involved in that, in that applicant's request.
Yeah, and what constitutes a hardship.
Well, maybe he has.
That's what I'm.
I can go over it, but so the, the regulation as applied to the property interfered with the applicant's reasonable use of the property. Considering the unique setting of the property and its environments. Uh, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the regulation and the specific restriction on the property. And the variance, which in not case, not in this case, but the variance would not injure the public or private property rights of others. And there is a section in this RSA that does point out that financial hardships are not considered under unnecessary hardships.
What is the RSA reference?
Um, I believe. That is six, seven, four, three, three. I need to do a bit more digging, that was just a sign.
I think that's right now zoning ordinance anyways.
It is, isn't it?
So we could do the reference to our zoning ordinance. That it's under, under variances on our zoning ordinance, I think.
Yeah. Six, seven, four, three, three, I believe.
Is what for the CBA?
Yeah, I thought it was the BA.
On the BA, yeah.
Yep, that's six, seven, four, three, three.
We have that there, it just goes. Or allows the individual to.
Page sixty-seven, the bar is, is about to be adjusted. Some of those, but I don't think it wanted to be detailed.
Anyway, I think, I think this has to be with waivers that they apply to our recital. So I guess you could probably use that same definition of unnecessary hardship, because a lot of those waivers have to get inside the lounge, so.
They do, and as long as it doesn't go against the intent of the zoning ordinance or the site plan review regulations.
Yep.
Because, yeah, we do waivers all the time and probably ought to be. Be adding on the reason why we granted the waivers.
Yeah.
Only because, yeah, it does not go next to what you link, and I've got a, a small thing I've got written out here that we probably had to use. If we. If we grant waivers, you know, uh. Defining that granting the waivers would not have an adverse impact on public health, safety, or budding properties, and that granting the request is consistent with the intent and purpose of the rules waived. If we added that in when we do waivers, then, you know, as a standard. For the play, thank you, I'll try and remember to bring that up. Next time we do a waiver on the site plan.
Absolutely.
So let's see, where is that?
On the separate changes.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be bush, yeah, that's going to be bush.
Yeah, it's going to be bush, I don't know enough about it.
Oh, like in any.
Is that about setbacks again?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they.
The one twenty-five foot setback?
Yep, yeah, yep, they want to reduce that.
We know that.
I don't get that. You're bringing along the state standard.
Yeah, yeah, it probably shouldn't be, but we'll see what Mike's, Mike's probably doing some more research on it.
Yeah, I, I do a lot of research, I think, just bringing along the state standard, it's seventy-five and. Yeah, it was a proposal.
And we were waiting or going to hear from the conservation commission on that. This was last year, they know. But, you know, they, I don't know if they ever got, they were supposed to get together with Mike about this, I don't know if that ever happened. It probably did, but just if you. Okay.
Yeah, and no, our wetland evaluation, you know. We're, are we going to spend more money to fully complete it, or do you know that information? Um, the thought is probably, you know, kind of a division between primary wetlands and other wetlands. Um, and I want to speak. For the, the committee, then. Uh, say some thoughts are for primary wetland, we refer to my five, or if not, some areas, maybe we can do fifty, seventy-five or so.
Yep.
Have a couple of my.
Well, I mean.
I think that conversation needs to happen.
Yeah.
And maybe it could happen, really, just come, we can figure it out.
Well, and I think we're going to, you guys are going to see very shortly that, uh, we might not have room on the, uh, warrant articles to even include that, so.
And we have a lot on that, warrant articles.
Oh, we, we can, well, that's, that's the next, uh, when we talk about.
Definition.
Definitions, yeah.
We should create, create genetics next year, or are we?
Well, no, we have a bunch of definitions that we want to, want to do there. But, you know, sweeping back to the, we, we talked about, we're giving separate warrant articles for the definition, but. Yeah, we don't have to, because if you have your books, we have your, well, it's under. It would be under single subject amendments to the zoning. And that would be page four sixty on this, this white book here.
Oh, the white book, the white book.
Four sixty, other page four sixty. And four sixty, and on the right hand side, under notice, I mean, notes to decisions. On number two, it says submission of amendments to voters. Now it says. The single subject rule is applicable to RSA six, seven, five, three, and a proposed amendment that includes changes to multiple sections of an ordinance is proper. So long as the sections sought to be changed are reasonably germane to the subject of the amendment. And that's Handley or Handley versus Towne books it, so that means that, you know, all the definition, definitions are pretty much germane to. Definitions in our zoning ordinance, I would think that that would apply.
I don't believe it.
Oh, yeah, we can talk to. So, talk to legal.
Now legal about it.
So, you got the page number?
Yep, I got it.
Did see, uh, red book RSA, is it?
It's our white, what, that RSA book, uh, this RSA, the new, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four edition of the RSA.
Okay.
What page? It's on page number four sixty. And it's under, on the right hand side, it's under notes to decisions. It's not necessarily the RSA, this is decisions that were handed down in court.
So, how are you finding?
Um, just.
Just read.
Yeah, but somehow that read, then I came across, I said, hey, you know, that's what we're doing here, so.
RSA six seventy-five, four. On page four sixty, so that's really towards the back of the board.
But it's actually talking about six, seven, five, three, which is the same type of anything now, but, but it's on a decision, it's not the RSA itself, but it's a decision which. Lets us, I think lets us do that there.
I can talk, I can talk to my.
It should be a lot easier if we could do that.
Yes, because I, um, our next discussion.
Let's go over those, so I just want to get that out of the guys, and some decisions, I, you know.
Oh, we got everybody's instead of.
Whole bunch of definitions, so where are we starting here?
Uh.
Sorry, but I see.
I wouldn't say that we could do a single. Um, one or two. Entitled definitions. And just definitions we change.
That's what you're proposing to do under that, that little court decision in the book here, so legal says we can do it.
Basically. We come together and. That will exist.
Oh, yeah, in, in the warrant article you're talking about, yeah, and that, but this is zoning, a little bit different, but zoning, yeah, we have stay low. It's going to get kind of sticky, you know, they'll tell you why. Um, definitions for twenty twenty-five town meetings. I have a feeling this is going to take up a chunk of the zoning portion of that ballot, um. I went through ordinance again this week. And I identified a couple of redundancies. Um, but before we get to those redundancies, let's first talk about the definition we came up with at the last meeting, service establishment. I thought that was pretty good, um, does anybody have any more comments on the service establishment definition? To remind you. I'll read it again, uh. This definition. Uh, okay, here we go, so provide a skilled service, personal labor, or expertise as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity.
Pretty good, sounds good.
Simple, there we go.
Yep, now, it covers a lot of it, I think. I think that could encompass both our service establishment and personal service shop. Because when we talk about a personal service shop, you're thinking about a barber shop. A nail salon, and you're thinking about the same things, just for personal, not for.
So should we eliminate the personal service shop?
And that was by the most, okay, if you guys want, I, I understand, I agree with that. They're allowed in the same districts, so you're not having any overlap with districts. You know, it's personal service shop and service establishment are currently allow. Uh, in the same district, so that's not a problem there. So anything in the, uh. In the definition to the zoning, that has to do with, with service, like personal service or service shops or something, maybe change that one definite.
Exactly, okay, yeah, okay.
Without changing what zones. So those. I wonder.
Stay with this.
Yes, no, I was working on it.
You're actually.
Yeah, I can send this.
Will you send it?
Yes.
So sometimes. You know. Things get great in definitions, we use definitions, we kind of. More limited, we don't like them. So we're saying that. We looked at the zone and. We're all adult or around there, there's no fair establishment. Perfect.
Yep, add same parking and everything, uh, so under parking, it's under personal services. Um, service establishments isn't identified under parking, which is something we'll probably have to. Well, I have to look at. Um. Uh, personal service shop or service establishment is currently allowed BB one. And BB two. And so we would just need to identify parking for our new definition. Which would be another one. That would be, and it might be another warrant article to remove it from, we will be changing words in the different.
We're already snowballing.
That's a lot, yeah.
So this one that is probably one of the required. Three, upwards of three warrant articles, establishing parking, removing parking, removing. The existing, uh. Mentions of personal service job.
Replacing it with.
So.
To if service establishment.
Yep, so if you, I just. Open the floor. Thoughts? It. It's going to be definitions only, probably, third order, and you're going to see why. That, that's already, that's already.
Well, keep it simple, definitions are something people can really understand, at least, set of some of the others owning that really makes sense.
Hey, I, I'd like this to be the highest priority for twenty twenty-five. If you guys don't agree, I'm happy to.
I'm always.
How much rest of the board?
Charlie, she agree? You agree, Brandon agree, yes, you agree, Steve, you agree?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, can we see a copy of the. Proposed warrants? Before they.
You guys will, yes, we have to have heard it in public hearing. Yeah, and we have to bring it, open it up, and the board has to decide, and the wording and all that type of stuff, so we will see it many, many times, so.
I have a question, like, you're, you're asking everybody instead of.
Haven't made it around yet.
I know you have, but I just want to know what the percentage is about.
Consensus about using, uh, changing only definitions for this year's warrant of zoning, nothing else, just definitions.
And we'll have a better idea of how many warrant articles, uh, these are going to take up. It's going to be. The most.
Allow. But it kind of has to be.
We, we had twelve right here before, so.
Those, so we'll just, I'm around, Richard, just definitions correct, Charlotte, definitions, Brandon, definitions, Mike definitions, it seems that, Mark, that I need. Sorry?
Yeah.
Definitions, okay, it's, you know, I, I'm happy to, happy to include anything else that we think we can. Um. But let, let's keep discussing, uh, does anybody have any comments on what we're just talking?
That part, no. If I could defer to contract, contract a video, so.
Yes, I just, I just, I don't recall.
Did we decide to find what the light industrial? System system?
No, I hope so.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get to it. That's a definition.
Oh, and do we have that defined?
Okay. That's, what is it? Okay, what is?
I don't believe that was defined in our.
The best place to look that up would be the manufacturing.
And we can, you know, just look around.
It's like, no, definitions.
And.
The manufacturing code one, they should break that down to what? The manufacturing association, so it is light, heavy. They have all kinds of different categories that I've got. I haven't got a current one, so.
We do not have white, uh, for the ordinance right now.
Distinguishing the two between them would be whether you have a CBL or not. Or they, if you have a CBL, that would mean like they. Equipment versus, you're talking about like landscaping, when we were talking about like people storing investigators or something like that inside, right? Or light, light duty and heavy duty.
There's, there's really, I just didn't recall. If we actually define.
We don't have it mentioned, we don't have a mention in ordinance at all, light industrial doesn't come up in our ordinance.
As a, and we're, as any, as anything, so that, we only have to define, oh, I thought you were. Sorry, I thought we were returning something.
Remember, I don't know what we did, it was one of those meetings, you're talking about. Um, people storing like a landscape or.
Yeah, we're, Victoria's inside, Victoria had some.
We were wondering, like, what's going to. Distinguish whether the guy has a small simulator or an larger simulator.
But if, if we have. No, if we're going to do definitions this year, and it looks like there's going to be a lot of warrant articles because of that. We probably should not enter any new definitions, definitions in, because we have to also enter those in as. Allowed or uses in whatever zones I go into, that probably should be set to another, your definition for another year. Deciding what zone they're going into. Well, likely, likely light industrial is just not mentioned in our code today, so. Sort of, it's, yeah, sort of clean, but it's probably gonna be another lot less there, but. Yeah, it's gonna be a couple years, unfortunately.
In reference to that, can we, can we cite what might have suggested as to what we can refer to? To determine what light industrial is.
I mean. Do you mean, do you mean that like, uh, difference can say, if I worked in, like, uh. Uh, at Ozland, where we actually get high speed equipment with lights and stuff like that, there's a lot of chemicals involved. Versus somebody that's just maybe, um, like they had down in Winchester, that one place, which is actually just a summer.
Well, here's the thing, though, that if we don't have it as an allowable use in any of our zones, like, like industrial, I think you're talking about. If we, if it's not mentioned as an allowable use, then we don't need to define it. Because then we'll have to introduce it as an allowable use in whatever zone we wanted to go into, so we need to stay away from that. Now, and deal with the, so the definitions that we need to clean up this year that are actually mentioned as allowable uses.
What I'm saying for the future. Where you get definitions. Light industrial versus heavy industrial.
Yeah, we just need to correct. Where to go.
It's definitely a future. I would think that Ozram's a light industrial. Yeah, they make lights.
Um, we have the zoning district, which is commercial slash industrial, right? And in the description of the uses, the, the general use of that. Uh, district is where we get sort of a definition of what industrial means to us. And it's, right, so it's at the very beginning, commercial industrial, the purpose of this, uh. Commercial industrial district, the purpose of this zone is to minimize street development and encourage off road development, unfortunately.
Yeah, cause commercial industrial, the bumper zone, right, or all of the.
But in, in another part, by the, uh, industrial, we talk about, you know, uses. Just the general uses that are. So we sort of get at, you know, the definition of light versus.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think this is the year that we're gonna touch. Uh, because it isn't the first thing I mentioned, it's already for potential warrant articles, so I. Just one definition. Exactly, so what else do we have on the list? All right, uh, retail establishment, problem with retail establishment. There are two different types of retail establishments in our ordinance. The first one is retail business establishment. The second one, the one that got us in trouble, retail sales comma services. I wanna combine those two, because there doesn't, there doesn't need to be, I don't think, no. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, retail business establishment. And then retail sales services. Not, not in servicing, complex services. That's exactly how it appears. And so I, I would like to combine those two, uh, into one, and then we also need, I think we need to define it as one. We do need to define it. And I have, uh, some definitions that aren't quite ready yet. Uh, if you guys have anything you wanna send along.
So we could call it retail sales or retail business?
Retail establishment. Just retail establishment, I, I think, I mean.
Yeah, I do, too.
Uh, I just, I did nice, clean. So we can just be thinking of a definition of that for our next meeting. Yeah, and I'll, too, the next, so the next pack, I don't, I don't wanna go too far ahead.
Yes, just, you know, one point is, you know, the retail business is remaining in those with district one and two. The retail sales by service. Is okay with business and we. They obviously meant different things.
Yes, they, they didn't, how that stuff comes about, how that happens is when. What we're doing now, changing zoning or, or contemplating zoning changes for the next year. It wasn't checked to see what the actual retail, uh, wording was in other zones. It was just come up with that at a meeting saying, well, okay, retail businesses, yeah, we know what those are. Not realizing that the retail sales was in some other part of the zoning, is where that's how that, that's how that all got in there. So, yeah, what we're doing is spreading that out, but it means the same thing, in my opinion. And I will send you a couple, um, this is for the next packet, but I'll, I'll send you guys a couple of recommendations. You guys can throw whatever you want at the wall, see what sticks. But you guys will have it in front of you next. And then again, we'll be, uh, taking out some of those words and replacing them with our, our actual retail establishment. Definition and then another one for warrant articles or something like. Yeah, I, I wanna get rid of the each zone having its own version of. Yeah, something, and that's how that happened. That's, that's just how that happened. Yep, uh, it will be nice and clean. All right, any, any thoughts on retail for any one? Yes.
When I think of retail. You know, not legally, but just in my own thought. I think of walking out with something in my hand. As, as opposed to a retail service or retail, whatever, where I'm not. Walking out with something in my.
Exactly. Well, remember, our definition for, uh, service establishment, uh, is not to have, it's not to buy a commodity. You don't get a physical commodity from our service establishment, but the retail establishment, definitely you can have physical objects. But, so that's good. That's exactly what I was thinking. Yeah, there, there would be a threshold, uh. Walk out with a weight from when they go too short. And there's always a component of, uh, service establishment. You're always allowed there. You're always allowed an accessory use. So if you're a service establishment, you could always have an accessory, uh, retail, as long as it doesn't overtake. Your service. If you go more into the retail, you would need to probably come back in for a site memory, so you establish your tone. Yeah, as, as long as the majority of our business is one, you just need to be defined as the majority, and not the accessory. That's how it was. Any other comments? We're on the, so we're on, uh, we're, keep it count here, we're on six or seven potential warrant articles, just fixing those two things. And we haven't come to the big one yet. I put on your research and development. I think now that we're counting these, I think that's gonna have to wait. It's not defined in ordinance, I think it should be defined in our ordinance, but I don't know if we're gonna have the room. And we probably aren't gonna get too many research and development places that, and so. Yeah, you said that now, yeah. Um, so I think it does need to be defined, maybe not this year. Uh, yeah. I mean, it is in our ordinance. It is, but it is, yeah, I know. I wouldn't think so. Build the machines there, so. But that would be a assessment. That would maybe be combined too, I think.
But why do you manufacture one?
I'll put it down for next meeting.
It uses in multiple zones. Zone that could be most impactful.
Yeah.
So if something was in the business.
Yeah, when I do the packet for the next meeting, I'll make sure to have all those zones. I don't know either, we'll find out. Backspace research. I'll figure it out. Uh, all right, so now we come to the doozy, office. Uh, why is the doozy? Well, we have four different types of office uses, each meaning roughly the same thing. Uh, so to start, we have business and professional offices that permitted in commercial industry. This is a kicker. Our next separate use, professional business offices. Separate thing, that is the same three words exactly, just reorganized. That's allowed in village business one. Our next office use, professional business or corporate office, that's in BB two. Our final office is corporate office.
I, I, my opinion, we need one business office and that's it.
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly. Maybe not, but I, and I actually just wanna do office. I just wanna shorten office and in the definition, we're not gonna get to this yet, but. I do wanna mention, we do have corporate office defined in our ordinance. One second, I'll, I'll get to one second. So the definition we have for corporate office in our ordinance reads. Building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of a business, profession, service, industry, or government. Or like activity that may include ancillary services for office workers, such as a restaurant or coffee shop. Healthcare facility or daycare facility. Nineteen ninety eight. Now, I don't mind that definition. If you guys like that definition, we would just change it to office, and we would just have office. But those four, do you think we can mine them? I think, I, the four is a lot, yes.
I have a question back in the morning.
Please.
I own a restaurant.
Yep.
I take that corner that I'm making my office.
You're still a restaurant.
Still a restaurant.
Yep.
But what is the difference between that corner being my office and my office building?
So what's a restaurant, what's an office? Yeah, yeah, so you're always allowed an office, right, wherever you are, I mean, that's just a separate. I mean, you, you need that office to conduct your business, right, as a restaurant.
Yeah, effectively, yes.
Yep. But that wouldn't fall under this office definition. So I, I think this definition's okay. It's not great, um, but it's not bad, and we already have it, but it means. Yeah, in my, in my mind, and in the planner dictionary's mind, corporate office means something different. And you leave it like a facility, a campus, if you will, yeah. Uh, so I, it's, I, I would entertain two separate office uses, uh. That separates out those big campuses from like more like professional, like lawyers' offices. That would be fine, but I think we need to convince to at least two. I, I would hope one, I think one could be. Yeah, so this office definition, though, as we have it in our zoning. To me, means an office building. You have careless, something like a office building, right? That's what we're talking about. That's what I would imagine, although we could interpret it to be a professional office. Now, I don't think so. I wouldn't interpret it that because the ancillary services, it may include ancillary services, meaning that it's a bigger. Yeah, but building or buildings was primarily for conducting the affairs of a business, that could be O N, that could be anything, really.
So large hospitals also have the same configuration. They have, they tend to have childcare, they tend to have restaurants, and you have all the things that you described in the public lines.
No, because maybe it's soft, and it just, I'll just back it.
What I'm saying is you're talking about a large, so we're not a small business office.
Depending if that's the only business, so if that's the only thing on that lot is a, is an accounting office, and that's an office. Well, we've got lawyers and accountants and so on under services out, so we don't really need, they work, would get in under an office. They'd come in under a service, because they provide a service. Yeah, that's how we want it separated, that's why it would be. I think that is separate, and yeah, if there is a place probably for large office buildings and some of our zoning, maybe, but. Yeah, commercial industrial and, uh, industrial park. But, yeah, that's probably what that office, but I don't know, it should just be office. Well, we, this, this one's gonna take a bit more care, I think, uh, cause these four different office uses are. There are four different zone districts, BB one and two are smaller zone districts than industrial park and commercial industrial. And I think they meant different things. They did when they were put in there. They did, absolutely. Well, as they should now. Yeah, well, not business and professional offices, and then professional business offices. But the other ones, yeah, I'll give you that. So I think, I think some more work is needed, and I, I would love to see this done next town anyway. I'll, I'll have this, I, I'll have this information organized in a more digestible way. But this shouldn't be introducing you to the subject that we just have a lot of organization.
This is, this is not a topic, this is manufactured uses, manufacturing facility. And then the third, third use is manufacturing, common production, common fabrication, common processing, common. Packaging assembly, common refurbishing, and or repair of goods.
You need a bunch of manufacturing, because there's a ton of different manufacturing facilities that can be done. One could be welding facilities, plumbing supplies, that injection molding. There's just a lot of different things that could go underneath manufacturing, but how many things could go underneath an office, an office building? So in our office, I can look into it, Victoria.
Okay, that's just another god of.
Yeah.
Uses that.
Absolutely.
Well, that's, that's where you get that in categories of manufacturing, with though to, uh, is it, uh. Heavy manufacturing, is it light manufacturing, is it technical? It just depends, because you've got a plant guy comes in for a plant, a model came in, so they wanted to go up there. Well, that's a totally different animal, because it's gonna work their make wishes.
Right.
Because of the nature of the manufacturing.
But historically, we haven't made those kinds of distinctions. So we could start doing that at some point in the future, but historically, you just. Have three different ways of saying the same thing, and I'm just asking.
I'll, I'll look into it next meeting. So Adam, what, again, were the different, uh, mentions of office and office buildings, professional offices and that? We had several of them in there, I'm wondering about the amount of warrant articles we're gonna have with this one. We, we've already spent them. So just this discussion is already. Is, like, for this year anyways, we could combine a definition, we could put like office slash business offices, whatever is noted, you know, noted in our zoning there. And we would cover a couple of different names we have in there, we wouldn't have to have a separate warrant article for that, we could send you something else. Just in the definitions, we would cover both of the names, or three of the names, two of the names. Yeah, so I think that. I, I think maybe we're gonna have to have a meeting with some legal counsel to see what we can do here. Isn't, this is the needed thing, we, we need to do this, and it has to, we have to start out, right? The best time to start, last year, second best time now, so, um. I think if, if we have to use up all of our warrant articles on organization, I think that's a good place to start. And we can start doing the real work, what, two years down the line, when it's finally organized. If we had to, you know, if, if it's important for us to define these particular terms in our zoning. All the different places in the zoning, yeah. Another way to do it is especially if we can put them under one category, you know, definitions of one warrant article. Yeah. We could add in those different, you know, professional business offices, business, professional offices, and use the same exact definition on all. Yes, I mean. They would, yeah, they would, but I mean, I'm saying. To not have as many warrant articles, pinpointing through there, we could leave those businesses in there. And have the same exact definition in our definitions, and get them out of there another year, yeah, if we need the space to do something else. Yep, yeah, we could.
You said a couple of terms, using of our warrant. Yeah, we, we have a fixed limit.
No, we don't, like, Grantley wants listening. Sorry, we don't have a fixed limit, I believe the theoretical limit is fifteen, twelve. That's even a lot. I, I think twelve, I think twelve was what we wanna stick to. I can look into that.
I can remember going to a segment, it was a couple of years ago, we had twelve. And me taking the brunt of war, you know, screaming at me in the second word, we had too many. So what I told them is, how about you come to the planning board and scream at anybody instead of just one member?
We don't wanna overwhelm people, we, Slime men have no authority over what we're doing.
No, we don't.
It's up to us, they get some, scream at here or whatever you want, it's, it's, doesn't make any difference. If the line more things is important, then goes. They have authority over me, I just wanna point that out.
Just thinking down the road here. Just thinking down the road, if. We're, we selectmen, the. From the town is kind of looking at developing certain sections. Of our, like Route ten, well. Or industrial, uh, road, et cetera. How, this is down the road, how are our definitions going to hold up? In five or seven years down the road? Given. You know, with what we're doing. Um. And what kind of?
Well, it's, it's not, not so much definitions as it is the allowable uses that we put in the zones.
Okay, but, but I. Well, what, what, what I found, what kicked it off was, I was thinking about. What is, what was the thought process? Back. Where. They were looking at. Uh, the airport. And thinking about developing that into a commercial airport. And the only reason that it didn't develop was that. Joseph Cotton got the control tower up to eleven. Where he lived versus getting it into here. But when they were thinking about that, I think they were thinking, okay. We're gonna get a commercial airport, we're gonna have to have so much industrial, this, we're going to allow maybe the development of a hotel. Or something like that, when they did their zoning. You know, they were, that was their thought process, but it didn't happen, and we've been, you know, kinda got left with a problem. And I just wanna be sure that what we're thinking about, how we're defining things. Are we doing, are we looking far enough down the road and? Will it fit into? Um. What is going to come to the town of Swansea? Is it going to work or is it gonna create a problem for the planning or zoning?
That's, I, that's kind of a master plan issue, right there, a- as well as the zoning that we do here as well, but it's kind of a vision for the town. I know what you're saying there, and selectmen have this vision of the town, and we're wondering if their vision is gonna fit in with. With the actual town actually. Is. Or will, I don't know, will they come?
Yeah. But again. The board. Kind of suggests those things to the public, and the public votes on. So Route, Route ten is situated pretty well, I, and. There's a fifteen hundred foot buffer extending out each way from Route ten, that's all commercial industrial, and then South Swansea reverses to business. So Route ten development's pretty, pretty good to go for the future, and then we would just need to amend the uses in those districts.
He might have been talking about the Tiff district.
Oh, the Tiff district.
Yeah.
You're also. Yeah. Yeah.
Good conversation.
I'll keep that in mind. You guys put me on that board there, so.
Yes.
Keep it in mind, we're discussing that stuff.
Yeah, don't be new off on Wild Ten.
Um, so those were the only ones I had written down, because when I. I wanted to keep going, but why?
Yeah.
I realized we were gonna run out of warrant articles, uh.
So let's, let's just, yeah, well. The board think about until the next meeting, uh, good definition of retail establishment and a good definition if we come with a better one of the office.
Yeah, uh, condensed office, and then, uh, Victoria, I will look into manufacturing and then research those two research. Definitions as well.
They're so, they're just like blocks.
Right.
It's, you know, it may not be.
Oh, we can do it, we'll, we'll see. It'll go on the sheet, but it'll be at the bottom, so maybe. Um, does anybody have any concerns, any questions, uh? I, I wanted to get so many things with the warrant articles, but. The more I just, the more I read our ordinance, the more I think it just needs a bit of organization. A better tool name, not, not a whole rewrite, I think I covered pretty good, the way I read, I think it's pretty well organized. There are just some things here and there that you.
It's gonna be a long process anyway.
Exactly. Yep, that, yep. Yeah, not my thing, you wanna go like, do a whole code rewrite or anything, uh, your code's pretty good, just some things could be, uh, organized.
Definitely important too, because the legislature is always changing the rules.
Yeah. Yeah.
What, what Ricky was saying about the selectmen, what we gotta watch is. If the selectmen wanna put an article on the line this year. That says the town people can vote, they let the selectmen do the vote. When they want to, they will, at any time. Versus when they reword. Yeah, yeah, it is a lot.
Yeah, I, I know that, yeah, they can decide to do that, but I, I believe that warrant article would have comfortable planning board. Get its recommendation or not, as to the zoning, so. We can discuss it, that could come up.
Michael, you saying that the. For selecting would be the same as the zoning would?
That. It's not as, so we do here, what, what, what it is, it's under HB fourteen hundred. The law is passed and signed by the governor that says. If the town, the town votes and a town law. Will allow the selectmen to change same zoning laws when they feel, and they have to do two public hearings on it. But they can change zoning when they feel like want to change it. To what they want to change it to, instead of the process we have now, when we go through what we're doing now.
And the whole town votes on it now, but the whole town would not.
The town, the town could vote on the warning if they, most people said, give the power to the selectmen. Then that's what would happen, it doesn't mean we would still look at projects. But it doesn't mean they can change his own. In other words, certain selectmen can make, uh, building, any place they, they want like class six rules.
And they're concerned, Bill, it takes so long to change the zoning, they're concerned about not being able to change it quick enough, but.
Okay.
I think that's by design, it shouldn't be able to change zoning.
I, I actually, I believe.
It should take a long time.
Yeah, that one raises a question, sorry, mate.
Uh, my, my, for, for last night.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, we, I, I've had a request. Um, to change the zone district in town. We don't have an official process on changing zone issues, we don't have a forum, digital application. Do, does a citizen of Swansea just bring their requests to the planning board?
I, I, I can speak to that.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
But I also, I also explained that when I bought my property, the devil in the front row, you know, one acre that was around the garage. Somehow in the past, he, and this is a rural agricultural area.
Yeah.
Someone wearing a pass, he had got the pound of chainsaw. To make virtual, so he could put his garage there, interesting. But when we bought the property, I simply came down here and said, I don't want the commercial property, I don't wanna pay that rent.
Natural.
So they, they changed it right back, and I didn't file any paperwork or anything.
Okay, okay, yeah, it's, we've had that happen a lot. Okay, people do come in, they want about the site, they want to change their, they're more disgusted, I'm used to the media whole application. Definitely, it's not that intuitive, and then the board decides whether to put on this warrant article. Odds were, I got it.
Well, I'm just wondering how that would affect assessment of tax.
You do.
Commercial property is actually, uh, great and accessible by them. I mean, regular. Yeah, residential or, or agriculture.
All right. Thank you for the education.
That's a good idea, you wanna go and break it and work with it?
Yep.
So, we just got you.
I want to know. They do.
Yeah, well, I'm aware of it.
Yeah.
So I'm willing to work with your teachers and.
Okay, I'm just, I'm having them, I wouldn't be able to have a proposal to merge you guys, so. Yeah. So I guess we're okay with definitions now, we're. Yeah, I'll go up there and see what we come up with, uh, we will be discussing it next meeting, I. The site plan review training will be on the agenda for next meeting, whether or not we do it, uh. You wanna just keep that running item on there until we run the items, or we do that, yeah?
The minute, they go, everyone here, we're getting it. What you're asking the members to do is to be, think about definitions for, I'm just gonna look at them, service establishment, retail establishment.
Not service establishment, we've done that, we've.
Oh, done that.
By consensus, service, service establishment, establishment.
Okay, so retail establishment.
Yep.
And office.
Yeah.
Those two, two, third, third.
Uh, research and development.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And all manufacturing, yes, I have manufacturing, all of good research, I'm just finding the line, you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys will get your package, nice service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I think that brings us to the end of the meeting, anybody have anything else good for the meeting?
I did bring in the, uh, capital pool for last year.
Oh, yeah.
So somebody wants information on it. The way I do for a fire truck is you're gonna start, we're talking about that in the prior.
That is.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fireworks, the rule of law. For much, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Eight, five hundred.
Oh, two, oh, yeah, you know that.
So that, that was proposed for last year, cause it sounded.
But it's on the schedule for this year.
Oh, it is, well, that's your schedule for this year, or that is from?
This is, well, this, this schedule goes out several years.
Okay.
And the reason we bring in the party heads is so that things can change, because I know Joe Russo, the captain of, of Potters. Wants his backhoe earlier than he wants another company, but he needs it, so we made those changes.
So they just boosted that one onto another year, you mean, or that it was? That fire truck.
Fire, no, fire truck is still on schedule.
It was on, it's on schedule.
For every place and all of them.
Okay.
But the fire engines are extremely expensive.
Yeah, yeah, I guess they are.
But the, uh, well, you have, right now, the, the one reason we should have a new fire station is we have to build. Especially build a fire truck to fit into a station.
Yeah. That's not entirely true.
Well, it is.
I mean. I just suppose.
Well, we change the tire. Oh, yeah, but you're still going to especially go. You don't see it in the museum, that fire truck. Well, yeah.
I'm talking about that, the, uh, new fire station, just an update. Um, we met with the selectmen our last meeting, which was Monday, I guess it was. And. Showed them a reduction in size of the station itself, it's reduced probably by about a third, footprint wise, but in square footage, it wasn't because. We're talking about a second story, a little second story out there, so you have the bay light all the way across. There, so you have room for future development or future use upstairs of this building, and they would have office, or. Small meeting room, things like that downstairs there, but anyway, just a concept of doing that, to see if we can sit down with an architect and. Decide, and also by consensus, it was decided that we ought to. Hold a budget of, say, three point five million to see what the architect can come up with in those constraints there. So they gave us, compared to the last few hours of the architect's time on this coming Monday. With the, we have a smaller group, five of us on the design part of there, and then later on that day, we're going to the full committee to see. But to see what the architect can do, whether they can come up with a set of, not working plans, of course, but plans good enough to possibly sit out and get bids for. Uh, ballpark, bids for the whole thing. So again, that enables you to move the fire station a little bit closer to the road. Maybe not so much groundwork in back, they also, it looks like they want to turn the fire station around so that the bays are facing Route thirty-two. And not on the side of the building as we before, but part of our want, would like that.
How are they gonna do that, the bays, through bays?
Uh, they are gonna, it won't be through bay, the footprint would be the same, but talking about turning the building, having the, having four bays in front. And in back, uh, the offices or on the side, offices, one or the other. So anyway, that's where we're at right now, we're gonna talk with the architect, see if she knows, if we're looking at a budget of that much, three point five, see what. Will fly, will, will not fly for that amount of money, and go from there, Steve.
Put in a second floor.
Pardon me?
Put in a second floor on the firehouse.
Did you say, do we need one?
No, putting one.
Oh, putting one there.
If you got a lot more, you guys could just, it may not one level.
Probably not, because you've got, you've got smaller footprint, and you're, you're building just going up, building a second floor, we're gonna be. Um. I don't remember, I think it was twenty some odd feet high for the bays, for the fire engines themselves, so just the same roof, like roof height all the way over. And it would allow space up there, mezzanine for storage in the garage bay part of it, and office space, or whatever space. Over the office part of it.
Sure, two staircases and an elevator. Up there, finish space up there.
But we're just looking for a, a way to have intervention in the station without. Actually expanding it, you know, and you build it, build a shelf all at once, and, and maybe you can expand into that space later on, get more space. Because clearly they are not gonna get the space that they wanted on the last several proposals, Eric, it's just, it's not gonna do it.
So once you, once you have a second floor, you have to have handicap access ability?
Uh, we've included an elevator, yeah, and they set apart, it's like we have.
We, we can do it, the second, the second floor is not gonna be the general problem, yeah. No, so. You know.
Now, that's included in, in the design, preliminary design that we came up with.
It was an elevator, so.
We'll sit with the architect anyway to see if it's feasible to do that, if that's the case. Then we would get probably the go ahead from the selectmen to hire. Architect to do the set of plan, bid plans, and maybe send that out, and maybe have it ready for town meeting, maybe. That's where we're at.
And Scott volunteered to draw it up with.
I did, I drew it up, actually I drew two of them up. And then they, I think the assistant chief came in with a different design, so decided, well, we'll just go for the concept. Go over the concept of it, and then we'll, they're protecting the rest of it.
I think the motion.
Okay, once I get the motion, I'll pressure to a turn, second.
Just slide in there. He loves the favor. Okay.